Hey guys.
Hey.
How are you doing? Just let us know in the chat, just at the beginning, how do you feel about the APUASS history exam? Like on a scale of 1 to 5, how ready are you? 5.
A 6.
Nice, a 6, that's pretty confident. Nice, the 3s are good, 3s are good.
Can you also comment on what states you're from?
Nice. East Coast, oh Arizona, wow.
California.
Alright, we have 23 people so far, so I say that's good enough to go and get started. Welcome to the Q&amp;A all, I'm Lee.
And I'm Austin.
We are new streamers for Fiveable, so this is our very first stream. But, just put your questions in the ask box and we will answer them. But before we do that, first, this is the weekly stream calendar for all the other live streams that we have on Fiveable. Those of you who've been with us for a while probably know this already, but if you don't, this is our streaming schedule. And you can also follow us on social media. We have a TikTok, a Twitter, an Instagram, and a YouTube. And I've heard our TikTok and our Instagram are pretty great. So, put your questions in the Ask a Question tab and we will answer them.
And just as a reminder, next Thursday, there is going to be a big 5-hour APUASS cram session. And if you haven't bought your cram pass yet, go ahead and get it, I think it's $5.
Yeah, well, your cram passes are, if you have a cram pass already, then you'll get into it. But if you just want to watch the live cram session, 5-hour cram session next week, it's only $5. Alright, I'm going to go ahead and answer the first question, and thank you Perla for answering it as well. Can we use our digital notes or does it have to be hard copy only? Again, you can use any notes, just like Perla said, but also know that College Board may also be watching your screen. So just be aware of that. Also, one big thing that was gone over in a previous livestream, that went over new exam specifications, is that you cannot have a Google Doc open that anyone else has open because that would be considered collaborating. So if you're going to use digital notes, make sure that either they're A, not shared with anyone, or B, are a copy of the shared notes that doesn't have, don't have anyone else shared on them. So honestly, it's a matter of preference, but make sure that you don't void your exam in any way by accidentally sharing them with anyone.
Exactly. Parker's asking what the highest yield topics to study would be? And that's pretty subjective because it depends entirely on what you feel confident in. Like, for me, I'm pretty good with Civil War and antebellum stuff, but I'm pretty weak with the Gilded Age. So I would definitely focus my studying on that, on the Gilded Age. Make sure to review, like, what you're confident with, but focus the majority of your time on the stuff you're less confident in. That being said, some pretty high-yield topics would be like reform movements. And I would recommend studying on the antebellum era, because there hasn't been a DBQ on that in quite a few years.
It's Period 4. Period 4, it's crazy, because it starts at 1800 and then ends at 1848, so there's a bunch of history in the middle. Like, you have the founding of the country, all the way to pre-Civil War stuff, like, there's, that's a large chunk. And that hasn't, again, like Austin said, that hasn't been a DBQ for a very long time, so there's a high chance that it is actually going to be from Period 4. But don't think that, because I actually really don't know. I don't work for College Board.
Okay, so we got a question on the Palmer Raids and Harpers Ferry. So these two events are not really related, but the Harpers Ferry was a federal armory, and I believe it was in West Virginia. And the famous abolitionist John Brown led a raid there in 1858. And his mission was, he had a dream that he was inspired by God and ordered to free the slaves, to start a rebellion, just crushing slavery, ending the system. So he and his sons raided the armory at Harpers Ferry in order to get weapons. Unfortunately, the federal government sent troops there and they pretty much, they crushed it. He was hanged. But it galvanized abolitionists against slavery. And that kind of put them in the position of wanting to end slavery forever, it was set in their minds. And the Palmer Raids happened during the First Red Scare, right around the 1920s. And that's basically the federal government arresting suspected communists. It was just like, they pretty much took away a lot of the rights, due process, that kind of stuff. Not super important, I would say the Red Scare is a bit more important. But for sure, for sure, an important event in the era between wars, the 1920s.
Yeah, Palmer Raids were November 1919 to January 1920. Alright, our next livestream is going to be the cram session next Thursday at, let's see, is that 4 Eastern Time? Yes, 4 Eastern Time. We will be on, again, we'll be on for the first 2 and 1/2 hours, and then the APUASS teacher will be on for the last 2 and 1/2. Oh, I just accidentally answered a question, I'm sorry.
I think it was about William Lloyd Garrison and Bleeding Kansas. So William Lloyd Garrison was another abolitionist who published a newspaper called The Liberator. And that was firmly against slavery, total abolitionism. He wanted to give slaves full rights, total freedom, they were to be equal with the whites. And that was really not a, not popular in the South for obvious reasons. And Bleeding Kansas was violence that arose after the Kansas-Nebraska Act in the 1850s. And that was what happened. So the Kansas-Nebraska Act allowed for popular sovereignty in the Kansas and Nebraska territories, which meant that the citizens got to choose whether it would be a slave or free territories and states, despite them being above the 36-30 line designated by the Missouri Compromise of 1820. And so what happened is you have a lot of pro-slavery and anti-slavery people coming in to vote. And there was a ton of violence, and it was given the name Bleeding Kansas in eastern newspapers. Okay, Sandra is asking if we should still know about periods not explicitly tested up on the exam? And I would say so, yes, probably a good idea, because it's contextualization and historical context you can use for analyzing documents and for your introductory paragraph. I would say especially periods 1 and 2. Period 8 and 9 are less important because they're later, so they're not causing events in Period 7. But I would for sure be familiar with stuff like the Columbian Exchange, the differences between the Northern, Middle, and Southern colonies, and some of the English heritage and background before the Seven Years' War.
Yeah, and I guess for periods 8 and 9, it is still something good to know, but it's not necessarily good to know for the exam. Alright, can you explain the War of 1812 and the Quasi-War? Alright, Quasi-War was under Jefferson, right? Around that time?
Okay, it was under John Adams, yep.
Oh, Adams, okay, I'm sorry.
That was 1800.
Alright, that was one that was never really declared and it was fought almost entirely at sea. And it grew out of the XYZ Affair. Let's see.
Yeah, the Quasi-War was just undeclared. It was mostly over trading and commerce, because the French were firing on American ships. But the US really could commute with the French Navy, so they really weren't able to declare war. But the War of 1812, that was about 10 years later, a little more than 10 years later. Now it's between US and England. And that was also caused by a lot of maritime and trade factors. Like, the English were impressing or taking US sailors onto their ships and forcing them to work for them. And there was a lot of trade disagreement between the US and England about what the relationship would look like, whether the US would be kind of subsidiary and still have to trade only with England, like what happened when there were so colonies. And it ended up with a Treaty of Ghent in 1815, or 1814, I should say. It resolved it, no territorial changes, no one gained any land. But the US was a little more unified as a nation. They were all more or less against the British. And it also resulted in the end of the Federalist Party. Because the Federalists were more business-friendly and trade-oriented, and the war with England was destroying trade. So, leading Federals called the Hartford Convention in 1814, which was an attempt to make peace with England and end the war. Unfortunately, it was not recognized by the English. And as the convention was growing on, Andrew Jackson won a huge US victory at the Battle of New Orleans, which made the Federalists look very silly, because they were trying to make peace while the US was winning a battle. And that pretty much discredited the Federalist Party and caused the end of them. And this is where the era of good feelings began, for the next decade or so.
Right, done. Answering, to know if we have any more free livestreams, I would check the Fiveable website for that one. I'm not certain, and I think this is the last free one, but don't, again, I'm not really sure about that.
Okay, we got a question about Wilson's 14 points. So, this was delivered in a speech by President Richard Wilson after World War I. And basically, it outlined how he wanted foreign relations and world peace to look after the end of the war. Again, not super vital, but definitely something good to understand. It kind of, he kind of started the League of Nations, that was also an idea of Wilson's. But unfortunately for him, the Democratic Party lost the election of 18, or 1918. So, the Senate did not allow the US to turn the League of Nations, which totally weakened it. And it kind of ruined his 14 points, because the League of Nations was not able to maintain peace in Europe, especially not without the US as a member.
Yes, and Perla in the chat, didn't Wilson die for trying to advocate it? Yes, he actually went on a nationwide tour trying to promote it, and then basically died of a broken heart, because no one liked it.
And this was during his presidency he had a stroke. An interesting anecdote, his wife, Edith Wilson, pretty much ran his day-to-day life and filled in for him for the last couple of months of his presidency. And he died in 1923, I believe.
Alright, what are some good suggestions for how to use outside information and what are good examples of outside information? Outside information, let's see. Is, outside information is basically anything that is not in your document. So if you have, there's some fact, or actually, sorry, it's not in any of the documents. So if there's something that comes to you that isn't in any of the documents, then that's automatically something you can use as outside information. Some good examples are, I think, related dates, like dates around the time that your document was in. Like, if your document's something about, it starts talking about something Andrew Jackson did, then you can go back and say like what led up to it, or what resulted from it, and just weave that into your argument. Because remember, your outside information has to support your argument. You can't just put in a random fact and have it get you that point. And we can go over, we have the rubric at the end of this slide, well, these slides.
And also to add on to that, make sure that your information is specific. So it can't be just an overall theme, it should be a specific event, for the most part. Because you need to be able to explain it and then connect it back to your theme. So make sure you mean specifically that.
Alright, again, periods 1 and 2, they are not on the exam. Oh, okay, that, not on the exam, but good for contextualization.
Treaty of Greenville, yeah, thank you, thank you Elijah, that's right. So, when the US, the Northwest Ornaments was passed, the Northwest Territory, a lot of federal troops moved in, and there was a lot of violence, like, there were quite a few wars, like Little Turtles War I know was one of them. And there were a lot of treaties that forced the natives, they either forced them west to places like Illinois, Wisconsin, or they constricted them to smaller spaces. And at this point, the reservation system was not established yet, but these were de facto reservations in all but name.
Alright, famous reform movements. Let's see. Mainly, my biggest, the ones that I know the best at least, are the ones around the time of the Gilded Age, when after big business kind of took over and the United States had a very big laissez-faire approach to economics. And then, you know, Roosevelt became president, he said, "No, I'm not going to do that anymore", because the public was like, "Hey, these big businesses are kind of taking us over and taking advantage of us, and we don't like it." And so Teddy Roosevelt said, "Yes, I'm going to go trust busting." So that's when you have the Anti-Trust Acts, and that was one of the main things that he ran for on his ticket. Do you have any other reform movement set you can remember? Oh, temperance and progressivism, and then...
Yep, temperance is a big one, the American temperance thing. We talk about abolitionism.
Yes.
That was a bit earlier. So you see abolitionism and women's rights getting their start during the Second Great Awakening, which is a big religious movement. I'm going to talk about that a little bit. The Second Great Awakening was, it started around the 1820s, 1830s. And out of it, there were many things it promoted, but among them was the human perfectionism, that humans could be perfect, or they should at least try to make the lives of themselves and others around them better. And that's how a lot of reform movements got their start, especially in the North. Yep. Yeah, that's right. Hull House, a lot of immigrant education. Jane Addams was a big aid to immigrants, she owned a lot of those immigrant houses. Abolitionism, of course, that's around now. And also the Seneca Falls Convention really kickstarted the women's suffrage movement, with the Declaration of Rights and Sentiments, all men and women are created equal. It drew heavily on Enlightenment ideas, like natural rights, equal rights, that kind of stuff. Yep, Perla, Dorothy Dicks, prison reform, prison and asylum reform as well. Also Horace Mann, the beginning of the public school system, especially in the Northeast. Standardized curriculums. The decline of small, local, religion-centered schools in the Northeast, you get a lot more state-run schools.
Scrolling back to make sure we didn't miss any. Yeah, temperance, and that led to prohibition, and then, which didn't really work, because people started smuggling alcohol. Anyway, temperance was mostly a women-led movement, although there, obviously, there were some men involved. But it got, it got bad enough that some temperance people would go in and break into taverns and bars, and then smash caskets and bottles of alcohol. And so eventually that led to the banning of all alcohol in the United States.
And a good way to remember those amendments is, the 18th Amendment is prohibition, and the 21st is, you could repeal that, of course, in the drinking age, so.
Parker, what do you mean by religious reform, or religion reform?
If you mean that new denominations sprung up, you're absolutely correct. Baptist and Methodist in the South.
Right.
Those denominations, Protestantism, were founded at its time. And obviously, the Southern Baptist Church is actually the largest single denomination in the US, other than Roman Catholic Church.
New Lights Were His Old Lights.
New Lights Were His Old Lights, I'm not entirely familiar with that.
Oh.
It has to do with preachers, they sort of believe different ways, perhaps.
Yeah. New Lights, those were the people who really wanted to do the, like, they were all into the, yeah, new revival, new religion, new ways of presenting information and getting the religion out to the people, whereas the old lights were like, "No, we got to do it the way we did it before, because it's how it works", and the new way is either like, "Not according to the Bible, or it's just not going to work, or we can't use that." So it's, you can compare that a little bit to like, different ideas of Enlightenment. And also, you can compare that to loyalists versus revolutionaries, but that one may be a stretch, and also, that's not necessarily in the periods. They could be boomers, they might have been boomers, you're right, Scarlett.
I'm sure they considered that at that time.
Yes, yeah, I do think that the older populations were more of old lights, and the newer, younger populations were new lights. Are you supposed to include the APUAS themes in your DBQ? I think that's kind of...
That's not the main focus, because the DBQ prompt will usually give you a specific theme to talk about. Like, it could be social, maybe social reform movements during the Gilded Age, or it could be political divisions during the antebellum era. So typically, it will give you a more narrow theme to focus in. Like, you're not going to be talking about geography, and culture, and American identity, all in the same essay.
Right.
Like, you shouldn't be, yes, Sandra, you're exactly right. You shouldn't be saying, you shouldn't be like using the words, "This theme was", the theme is not the point of the DBQ.
Similarities and differences between domestic policy during World War I and World War II?
Well, leading up to both wars, and until the US got involved in both in 1917 and 1941 respectively, there was a strong isolationist feeling among most citizens. So, before World War I, the Monroe Doctrine was still kind of in effect. People still believed the idea that the US should stay out of European affairs. But events like the sinking of the Lusitania, and the Zimmerman Telegram, which was a German attempt to get Mexico to the end of the war on the side of the Central Powers, not on Germany's side, those kind of provoked public opinion toward war, which we did enter in 17.
Yeah, and an important thing to note about World War I is, and I think mostly World War I, I'm not so sure about World War II, is that we, America sold weapons to both sides before we got involved. So, like, in the beginning of World War I, the assassination of Archduke Franz Ferdinand was actually done with an American-made revolver. And another big thing is the sinking of the Lusitania was always covered up as like, "Oh no, they killed civilians, we must go to war now." But it's highly possible that that, that the Lusitania was also smuggling weapons overseas.
Yeah, new evidence in the last decade that that was likely.
And the Zimmerman Telegram, I feel like that one was fabricated, but I'm not, I'm not remembering correctly. I do know that Mexico said, "No, we're not going to fight America again", because last time we fought America, they stole half of our country, which was the Mexican-American War. And then World War II, yeah, Perla said the lend-lease and cash-carry policies, that's right. But mainly, America didn't want to get involved until it was absolutely necessary. And then in World War II, when we were bombed by Japan, then that's, you attacked America, you put an attack on American soil, now we're going to go to war. And then, yeah, I think that's, that's it. And yes, that is actually our next question.
Actually, I do have one more thing to add, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
After World War I and World War II, there was a big economic boom. So agriculture production during World War I had exploded, because there were a lot of, the US government had a lot of subsidies to farmers in order to keep them producing food for the war effort. And the same happened after World War II, although with industry. So the most economists agreed that World War II was really what pulled the US out of the Great Depression. And the US was producing so much, it was called the arsenal democracy, because we made so many of the weapons, that after a war, it transitioned pretty smoothly into, back into civilian manufacturing. Yep, exactly. Okay, so finally, can you explain the Homestead Strike and the AFL? Yes, you can. So the Homestead Strike was a very large, perhaps the most important strike during the Gilded Age. So what happened is, at the Homestead Steel Plant, which was owned by Andrew Carnegie, the workers basically stopped working because of poor conditions, low wages.
Yeah, they were specifically, specifically, they were protesting a wage cut that had been proposed, and they were like, "No, we can't function on even less money, when we're barely surviving now."
I think there's, yeah, increased hours, and they wanted to increase hours and reduce the wage. And what happened was, the manager of the factory, I think Henry Clay Frick was his name.
Yes, yes.
Consulted with Andrew Carnegie, and they determined to crush the protesters. So they brought in private detectives, and there was a lot of violence, there was a big fight. A lot of protesters were killed, along with some of the detectives. And eventually, I think, some armed troops from National Guard came in and restored the situation. And the workers ended up losing.
Yes, yeah, Henry Clay Frick, his name is very hard to say. He sent in the Pinkerton Guards, and they were met by the protesters, I think it was like 10,000 protesters, who were armed and they had a big fight. And so, yeah, then the National Guard got caught in, and then the protesters were completely crushed. The AFL, if you're done, are we done with Homestead Strike, before we move on? If so, the AFL was the labor union made by Samuel Gompers, and it was really... And it was really the only one that America would tolerate because it was, it didn't get political, it wasn't, didn't lean too much towards socialism. And so it, it was like the very neutral one. They didn't do fights, they were focused more on nonviolence because violent protests were immediately shut down, which is another reason why the Homestead Strike is a really big turning point. Because after that, there were a lot more, there were a lot stricter rules on labor unions, a lot of them got cut or destroyed. But the AFL managed to stay out of trouble and I think it's still around today. And it also stands for the American Federation of Labor.
And there was a similar group called the Knights of Labor. They were a little more secretive, a little more exclusive.
It's a secret club of labor organizers.
Yeah. And they, they got disbanded after a while because of a few violent strikes.
All right. Can you explain the differences between the Great Awakening and a Second Great Awakening? So the First Great Awakening was the nineteen, sorry, not nineteen, seventeen thirties and seventeen forties. And that was a new religious revival that came along. When, and it primarily affected Protestantism, came along with Enlightenment ideals. Whereas the Second Great Awakening was the eighteen hundreds, early eighteen hundreds. And again, it was a new, a new way to try to get more people into the Protestant religions. Like the Great Awakenings didn't really affect the Catholic Church as much. They were mainly Protestant-focused, which was likely because the Protestant sects had more power to try to attract people. Whereas the Catholics were very like, this is the box you must fit in and you cannot get, go outside of it. So they wouldn't really try new things.
And it's worth noting that both Great Awakenings were very emotional.
Yes.
They, the preachers, the preachers kind of threw themselves into the crowds, preaching like Fire and Brimstone is one famous sermon from the First Great Awakening. You're gonna get punished if you don't repent. So there's all very, lots of emotions coming out of this. And out of, out of the Second Great Awakening came the aforementioned before movements, like abolitionism and women's rights. And they're both figure-of-the-person denominations.
Yes. Yeah, Sinner's with the Hand of an Angry God, Agatha. Yeah, that's a good title. It's a good work for that one. All right. There's a question with three votes down at the bottom that says, can we practice analyzing documents? We actually have a couple for you guys to work on when we're done. Oh, now it's the top. When we're done answering questions, we can go straight into our document analysis. So.
Okay. We're gonna ask, do you think the DBQ will be during Unit Three? Maybe you think the test is going to start with Manuel Miranda giving words of encouragement and then reading the prompt. This is due to the special stream they had with him. I have not heard this, but.
I have not either.
I mean, it could very well be.
I think Unit Three is semi-probable. I looked at recent DBQs and for the past five years, they've all been like Period Five and before. And I think there was like one colonial one in like 2017-ish. My personal guess is Period Four again, because we haven't really seen that many Period Four ones. I don't think we've had a Period Four DBQ since 2013. Although bringing in Manuel Miranda may also be like a college board hint towards Period Three, but I'm not sure that's how they work exactly. I'm actually kind of sad I missed that one.
Yeah, I know. I'd be thrilled.
All right. Can you go over American colonization and its effects on World War I? American colonization as in America making colonies or? I assume that's what that means. I assume that's what that is.
Imperialism.
Imperialism, yes.
Okay, yeah, making colonies. Yep, thank you.
Awesome.
So it would help to look at the context of the situation here. Because America was a little bit later in the process of making its own colonies. Worldwide.
Eighteen eighties?
Called Second Wave, Second Wave Colonization. And you'll have a lot of European powers colonizing Africa and China indirectly. So the US eventually, like at the end of the eighteenth century, or nineteenth century, I'm sorry, gets into the action here. And they want to create, create an empire, but Spain is in the way to a lot of things that they want. Spain owns Cuba, Puerto Rico, the Philippines. And a lot of Pacific Islands. So conveniently, there are a lot of rebels in Cuba that are rebellion against the Spanish governor, who was, who was really cruel. So the US.
As well as in the Philippines.
Behind the rebels. And they sent the USS Maine, which was a protected cruiser down there to, as a show of force and to evacuate the US, US Councilman, because there was, there was grilling unrest. It sank, obviously, it flipped and sank. And what people, historians today believe it was a magazine explosion. Basically its ammunition blew up. But sensationalist newspaper headlines swayed public opinion toward war. They totally thanked Spain, despite it not necessarily being true. So there was very little resistance, public resistance to go into war against Spain. And long story short, the US Navy crushed the Spanish Navy in battles in the Philippines and Cuba. And what ended up happening was Spain gave up pretty much their entire overseas empire. The US annexed the Philippines, Puerto Rico and some Pacific Islands. But Cuba was allowed to remain independent due to a couple, the Platt and Teller Amendment. But the US still was able to influence Cuban politics. And that was through the Platt Amendment, I believe. But the Teller Amendment ensured that Cuba could not be annexed by the United States.
Yes.
And as to its effects on World War I, I wouldn't say there's a causation there because World War I was really caused by European colonization. So I'm not quite sure what you're driving at here, but colonization certainly brought the US more contact with Europeans. It made them, I guess, feel a little more European with the whole empire building and all. But World War I was mostly caused by European factors.
Yes.
So, because the US didn't enter until 1917, as I already mentioned. So I would not, I would, on my aside, I would not say that imperialism caused World War I.
There's a comment underneath this one. I think it shows, by Songa, I think it shows that World War I was a continuation of American world involvement. And I think so because I think previously there was a policy of isolationism. And then once the Spanish-American War started and the whole idea of American colonies and American imperialism, that's when America started to get more into world events and wanting to become more of a world power. So.
But no, there was, there was also resurgence during the Great Depression of isolationism.
Yes.
Because world trade runs to a halt. International interactions are also drastically reduced. So isolation comes up again. It becomes more popular during the Great Depression. But yeah, that's, that's certainly right.
All right, can you explain the Brasero Program, the Tuskegee Air Force and the effects of Spanish flu in Period Seven? I can, I know about the Tuskegee Airmen and the Tuskegee Air Force, because I'm actually from Alabama. So I can answer that part. Tuskegee Airmen were a group of all African-American fighter pilots who were trained in Tuskegee, Alabama. There's actually a really great play about them called Fly. I'm not sure if it's available anywhere for you guys to see, but just as a note, they were one of the most successful units in World War II. They were the Red Tails and I, they never lost a bomber, like they managed to get all the bombers, protect all the bombers. It was a really revolutionary thing because they were, the Tuskegee Airmen were an all African-American unit in a period before integration. And their involvement in the army allowed for a little bit of headway in the Civil Rights Movement, which is, I think that's more Period Eight, but it's still important.
And yeah, Alonji, you're right. The Braseros were Mexican migrant workers that came to the US during World War II. Because a lot of the US's young male population was overseas fighting. And many of them were working in factories, which created a shortage of agricultural workers. And so the US initiated the Brasero Program, which is a series of laws that allowed Mexicans, Mexicans to not necessarily immigrate, but come for, come for seasonal harvests to provide added labor. And it just made sure that they were fairly treated. They were given a quote-unquote adequate wage. Thirty cents an hour is not that great. But yeah, just importing labor during World War II. Also the Spanish flu, sorry, I missed that. So the Spanish flu, how appropriate for right now. Came out of, it started spreading right at the end of World War Two, or World War One, sorry, World War One. So it spread all over the world. It actually killed more people than World War I did in four years. I don't know a ton about it. I believe it infected a lot of young people. It's very deadly, exposed to the need for better medical technology. And eventually it's culminated with the discovery of penicillin and other antibiotics in the future. But other than that, I'm not super, I'm super educated about that.
Right, same here. I think the biggest thing about Spanish flu is the, just how it affected population-wise and what it did for medical field and hygiene. Just kind of, kind of like how the Crimean war, for those of you taking Europe, kind of like how the Crimean war affected medical technology back in Europe. So. All right, continuity and change throughout periods. Yeah, that's a really big question.
Actually, how about, you guys, I'll go on the comments and type in some things that you might, you think would work for continuity and for change.
Yes.
You can be, try to find one example for each.
Shift from rural to urban, industrialization. Ooh, that's a good one. Yeah, rural to urban, that, that's a big one. Social reform.
Yep, Sonia, that's good.
Yeah. Oh, slate, the issue of slavery, yeah, that, that's a big one too.
Sinner, demographic divides is a bit general. You might need to specify that a little more, but that definitely has promise. Between like segregation.
Southern way of life. Again, I think that one's also a little bit general, but I guess you mean like antebellum period to Reconstruction to Civil Rights, I guess? Rich versus poor, yeah, social stratification. Westward expansion, that's another big one. Yes, that's one, that's actually in Period Four. Economy, also a bit general, but definitely an important one.
Depends what you mean by economics. I mean, if you're talking about the, the system, yeah, from that when Jackson killed the bank, the Bank of the United States and got rid of central banking, all the way through the Great Depression, there was a cycle, what's called boom and bust. So you have a lot of, a lot of really good economic times and then a lot of periods where there are panics and recessions. Like the panic of, I'm afraid of the year. It was right after Jackson left, like 1837 or something.
Yeah, kind of good to hear seven. Yeah, because that's the one that, that's the one that Martin Van Buren had inherited and then no one liked him because of that.
Yep, exactly. He was one term president.
All right, earlier you said like industry, so I guess, I assume that's a Gilded Age question.
Like industrialization.
Yeah, industrialization definitely changed the economy because that's like when the stock market started gaining power and when big business started gaining power as well. And banking was a big thing. Oh yeah, Mark, Sinner, yes, market revolution, industrialization. That was, that was a big thing as well. Political machines.
Okay, yeah, I should, political machines would be good because you can tie that in later with lobbying organizations. And you do need to be careful there because that lobbying really takes off in Periods Eight and Nine with the rise of Reaganism and the conservative resurgence. But yeah, Boss Tweed, Tammy Hall, those are, that's all very good.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna talk more about continuity and change when we do our cram session next Thursday. So we'll, we'll, this question will be answered definitely more in depth then. All right, dollar and big stick diplomacy. Okay, so big stick diplomacy was Theodore Roosevelt. Speak softly, carry a big stick. Basically, I, I think that one's more of like intimidation technique. Whereas dollar diplomacy was Taft and where alliances were basically bought instead of intimidate, like you would intimidate someone into an alliance. Taft focused more on paying people to have an alliance. And it's debatable which one is more effective. I was taught that big stick diplomacy was more effective because if you intimidate someone, then they're, they're too scared to go against you. Whereas if you, if you pay them, there's actually nothing stopping them from going back against you. And dollar diplomacy versus big stick diplomacy was actually a really big thing when Theodore Roosevelt ran for the second time. Because the first time he did his four years and then he basically named Taft as his successor. And since everyone loved Roosevelt, they were like, yeah, we're gonna vote for Taft. And then Taft decided to do the dollar diplomacy thing and a bunch of other things that Theodore Roosevelt didn't like. So he said, hey, I'm gonna run.
On trusts.
Yes, yeah. But Taft ran on the Republican ticket and then Teddy Roosevelt was like, well, I'm not gonna win against him. I'm going to run as the bull moose party with the progressives. And then that actually split the Republican vote. So half of, half of the Republican, usually Republican-leaning people voted for Taft. Half of them voted for Roosevelt, which was like, that split the vote, which meant that Woodrow Wilson got the majority of the vote. And that's, that's a big problem with running as a third party on a ticket, which is actually kind of relevant now. Is that if you split the vote, the other party is going to win because people are going to be too focused on little things to fully go towards one, one candidate. I keep forgetting to start answering on these. Federal government involvement with political parties in Period Four.
So there's really two, two areas in Period Four of conflict. You have early on, the Federalists against the Democratic Republicans. And then later, you have the Jacksonian Democrats and the Whigs. So we want to start with the Federalists, start early. So the Federalists were mostly in New England. They preferred high tariffs, which would protect industry and trade. They wanted to trade, to allot themselves with England because they had a larger economy, more colonies, it's a bigger economic block. And meanwhile, the Democratic Republicans, they were led by Thomas Jefferson and Davis Madison. And Jefferson is pretty well-known for his ideal image of American, which is like a subsistence farmer, making enough to survive, living off the land and being very independent. And yeah.
A big, a big thing, a big split with the Federalists and the Democratic Republicans, or as they're sometimes called, the anti-Federalists is geographic location. Federalists usually lived in the northeast cities, whereas the Democratic Republicans lived in the south where they were mostly plantation owners. So the Federalist policy of high tariffs and trade with England, that actually hurt them a lot. Because those high tariffs would mean that no one would buy from America and they wouldn't be making money. Another thing about anti-Federalists. Another thing about Anti-Federalists or the Democratic Republicans is that they wanted to go assist France, which was another big problem. In when the French Revolution happened, the Democratic Republicans wanted to go aid the French in their revolution, whereas the Federalists were like, no, no entangling alliances. That was a Washington thing. No entangling alliances. We don't want to get involved with this. We're too new as a country and it's probably a bad idea.
Yep, the Federalists did believe in a loose interpretation of the Constitution.
Yes.
The Federalists and Elton Hamilton, who was considered the leader of the Federalist Party. He wanted a very strong federal government to, to regulate and help the economy along and meanwhile, like the Jeffersonian Democrats definitely wanted a stronger state governments and local governments. And Jefferson was much more of a fan of the articles in the Federation and in fact, he praised Shay's rebellion and Whistler's rebellions, saying that, like you said, like a little rebellion is good from time to time. He liked it, he would challenge the government policies.
Yeah, I'm double checking that second question about Federalists and Democratic Republicans to Democrats and Whigs because there, I actually have a chart on that. But yes, and the interesting thing about
Ideologically, the Whigs were much closer, more closely aligned with the Federalists of seven decades earlier. So the biggest leader was Henry Clay. And he's pretty well known for number one, losing a lot of presidential elections and number two, the American system, which was an attempt by the federal government to create infrastructure, a lot of roads and canals, especially in the north and protective tariffs to allow northern industry to grow. And this was, this was massively controversial and hated in the south. And it kind of caused the rise of Jacksonian Democrats as a sort of reaction. And they were a fragment, a fragment of the, the old Jeffersonian, Jeffersonian Democrat Party, the Anti-Federalists. And they were more the common men. Led by Andrew Jackson, obviously, who believed that more people, like the common man should be the primary voice in American society as opposed to bankers and merchants, which he really distrusted. He didn't like that they made a lot of money without quote unquote doing anything. So that was his main rationale behind not renewing the Second Bank of the United States charter, which obviously caused massive economic problems.
Yeah, that was when you get to with the Wildcat Banks and what's the other one? Can't remember. Pet banks, yes, thank you. And another important thing, we did mention Henry Clay and I, this is worth noting as well because he was also very well known for his compromises. He did the compromise of 1820, which is also known as the Missouri Compromise, to figure out how to balance the slave states and the non-slave states because of the whole idea of if there was one. Keeping the balance in the slave states and non-slave states led to basically ties in the Senate. So if there was one balance, one way to say there were more slave states and they would have more votes in the Senate and we would be able to pass legislation that would allow for benefits to them, whereas if there were more free states and they, they would be able to do the same, be able to pass legislation that favored them and the other side didn't like either of those things. They were like, no, we gotta, we went our way. So to compromise. They, the compromise of 1820 led to, you could not admit more than, you could not admit just one state to the Union at a time. You had to bring them in in pairs in order to keep that balance. You would have to bring in one northern state and one southern state. I don't remember the other state that was brought in with Missouri, but I do know there is.
They split Massachusetts because before this, Massachusetts, they made it the same state, so they made, they made Maine the same state.
Right, right, right. And then that also established the, I think it's the 2440 line, so anything under the 2440 parallel would be a slave state, except for Missouri, which was above it, and then everything above the 2440 would be a free state, which we ran into problems with that when we admitted California to the Union or we tried to. As well as when we tried to admit Texas to the Union because it was already an established free state because Texas was Mexican and then it became its own country for a little bit and then it was like, hey, let's let us into the Union and then the United States said, no, because you're going to offset the balance and dribble the 2440. So I think that's that in California is what led to the 1850 compromise, which was another Henry Clay thing and he was like, what, 70 or 80 at the time?
He was quite old. This was like his last hurrah. I don't know if he died of the Civil War.
Yes. All right, that one is done. Scopes Monkey Trial. Yes, Sonya, that's a good reply. Existing debate between fundamentalism and modernism and the idea of like old ways, old ideas, staying with old things or embracing new ones. That was at the beginning of the 1900s or 1900s, 1920s in that general area, which was when the entire movement of modernism was kicking into gear after World War One. And yes, it is 3630. Thank you for correcting me. I don't, I'm not very good with numbers.
And Sonya, you're right, we say fundamentalism and modernism, but you could probably also say between religion and science. Because evolution is obviously a scientific theory and it was the belief of a lot of religious conservatives that the Bible did not allow for allow for evolution, you know, separate the creation and all. So yeah. Just the tension.
Yeah. And the impact of that, let me think. Because Scopes didn't win, so I guess that allowed for more like government oversight into education because the whole idea of the Scopes Trial was that Scopes was teaching evolution in schools and the preacher in Tennessee where he the preacher from the Tennessee city where he worked was like, no, you can't do that. It's against the Bible. And so then that went to, went to court and the court ruled in favor of William Jennings Bryan, who then died of a heart attack not long after because he gave it his all.
Okay, most important trials to study. So you also get a lot of responses. Hussey versus Ferguson, very important. It legalized segregation in the south. And that lasted all until the Civil Rights Act of 1965. Roundy Board of Education, that's outside of the time period. It's always a no for, you know, for like life. So still very important, but I, I probably wouldn't use that on my, on the DBQ. My birth versus Madison, yep, that established a duty of review. The Supreme Court can declare a law unconstitutional. Flanch versus Peck. I believe that was the first time the Supreme Court declared a state law unconstitutional, so it's a, which is the federal government's authority over the states. And Dred Scott versus Sanford. Yeah, that galvanized really, enraged Northerners. Because it declared, I think it declared the Missouri Compromise unconstitutional. And it allowed for tighter sovereignty and that was that was part of the reason the Republican Party was formed. In reaction to this case and also the compromise of 1850. Looks like there are a lot of, there are a lot of others.
Yeah, Coromonti versus US, that one is, I also believe that one is period eight, so that's not going to be on the exam.
Coromonti is period seven. Best Japanese internment.
Oh, true, true.
So you could use that. So you could maybe tie it into oppression minorities. Not really nativeism, but the tension between the majority and minority.
And also like what constitutes as humane treatment of prisoners or whatever, because a lot of people, like we call them internment camps and then we pointed fingers at the concentration camps. So like, I guess you could make a, something of a comparison there and how like American views of things worked. Neutrality Acts, those were Great Depression era, I believe. Yeah, that was post, that was post-World War One when the United States was like, no, we don't want to get into another war. We can't do this again. It's going to be bad. Again, going back to that idea of isolationism and stepping back from.
This is a pretty wide ranging and catchall, catchall phrase for a lot of anti-interventionist laws. But I think these refer to the acts of 1930s that attempted to keep the US out of World War, World War Two. As Nazi Germany was on the rise, after the invasion of Poland in 1939. This is more dedicated toward World War Two. There was a lot of, not nativeism, isolationist sentiments in the US at, before World War One, or World War Two, both actually, but this refers to World War Two.
Right. And you're right, Elijah, that, that act worked really well. I think in general, that was to stop us from just going in because we wanted to, but once an attack was made on American soil, then we can't refuse that. We've got to prove that we're American, we're strong. But yeah, that, it, it was an attempt. All right, we're, we're at an hour right now. If there are no more questions, then I think we need to sign off.
Unfortunately, we didn't get to practice analyzing documents, but if you find that cram test and come out next Thursday, we'll for sure cover at least, at least one DBQ then. So come back and join us in a week.
Two questions popped up, so 16th Amendment and 17th Amendment.
I believe this, actually.
Six, 16th, Congress shall have the power to lay and collect taxes on income, so income tax.
16th is income tax, yep. 17th is direct election of senators. And the 17th was a result of populism, which was a big movement in the Midwest during this time. It was mostly rural farmers who wanted, also wanted a silver standard. So even there was maybe more currency in circulation. And they, they kind of disappeared after the election of 1892. But this is a result of populist sentiments in the Midwest.
All right, McCullough versus Maryland and Marbury versus Madison.
And if I may add this, there is a good way to remember the order of the, of the amendments 16 through 20. There's a little saying, it's called tax senators who drink with women until they can drink, yeah. So you have tax 16, income taxes, senators 17, who drink, that's prohibition, being a prohibition, with women. And that is
19th.
Oh goodness.
Women's suffrage, women's voting rights.
Yes, and we do skip over lame ducks, which is a period of time between election and inauguration. But that one's not terribly important. And then of course, 21st is the end of prohibition, 1930s.
All right, McCullough versus Maryland was based on federal power or how, how much the federal government had power over the states. Because there was a national bank and the state of Maryland tried to tax it and so the Supreme Court led by John Marshall said, you can't do that. It's a federal bank, federal over, supersedes state taxes there. And then Marbury versus Madison. This is not saying I'm not great with Supreme Court cases. I apologize, guys. Again, that's another that one is another federal government supersedes state government and that one was judicial review. I think we went over that a little bit before. American courts can take down laws in states if they're considered unconstitutional. Yeah, judicial review, that's right. All right, free life session next Thursday. It is not free. The cram session is going to be from four to nine Eastern and again, that is five dollars, five hour cram sessions, so there's, we're, we're going to be covering a lot. We're going to try to cover like all the periods and all the themes on the exam. It's going to be wild.
Yeah, it's going to be a lot of, it's going to be a lot of learning, but it's going to be a lot of fun as well.
Yes, it's, it's going to be you guys' input and we're going to put it on screen and we're going to like facilitate review. Yes, if you did pay for the total cram pass, you're in. But if you don't want to pay that full 40, then you can just pay a one-time ticket for five bucks and get in. All right.
I think that's about all that we have.
Yeah.
Thanks all for coming. I definitely don't expect most 80 people.
Yes, that's a lot, you guys.
Certainly hope we answer your questions. And if you have more, again, bring them next week or bring them to another, another free stream.
Yes. Last thing, this one is an important one since it is about documents, which you didn't have time to go over. How long should you spend analyzing documents? Okay, so the DBQ have 45 minutes to do and five minutes to upload. I do not suggest biting into your upload time, so honestly, I think you should it depends on how fast you write. I've heard suggested time being like 15 minutes to analyze the documents and then 30 minutes to just write. But if you take longer to write and put your argument together, then you may want to try to analyze your documents as you go. That's what, that's what I usually do. I look at my thesis, I scan through my documents and then I start writing and analyze as I go, especially on an exam or a timed thing because you just, you just don't have time. And I would definitely type my essay to answer that second question. Unless you're a very slow typer, I would do, I, I would just type it because that's going to be the easiest way to upload because you have the whole copy and paste thing and writing it means you have to take a picture of it and then get it somehow to your computer or if you're, I mean, if you're on your phone, that's not as big of a deal. But copy and paste seems like the most, the one with the least problems that might happen. So, yeah. That's my suggestion. Do you have anything else to add?
Not much, except that trying to predict what the DBQ will be on is good. It's, it's just finding great, but I wouldn't recommend studying, focusing all of your studying on a few periods, just because been on DBQ there in a while. Periods three and four are my personal prediction, but in your, in your position, I would definitely say everything. Oh no, oh, I'm not, I'm not criticizing at all. I did the exact same thing when I took the course last year.
Me too.
It's certainly fun to make predictions about it and then see if you write and post to all your friends.
So again, last, very last question. This goes back to what I said before. Would you all recommend writing out HIP analysis or just trying to do in your head? Depends on your time, how good you are with timing, how fast you can write, how good, how easily you can write your essay once you have read through the documents. Personally, I'm going to just be doing it in my head for Euro because I, it's going to take me too long to try to do the HIP analysis. Off to the side. So again, that's your personal, that's your personal preference, how you write your DBQs, how you can put them all together.
Okay, so I think that's, that's definitely all that we have.
Yes. Thank you guys.
See you next week.
Bye, y'all.